I'd like to, I'd like to open the January 19th, 2021 Board of County Commissioners Regular Meeting. And as, as we usually do, we'll open our meeting with our invocation in this afternoon. Commissioner Simpson, if you would lead us, please, sir.
Certainly. A bow over your head if you choose to do so. O's gracious heavenly Father, we come together again recognizing that you are the author and creator of all life and liberty. Help us to remain ever mindful of that distinction and to acknowledge that we are the representatives of the people and not Lord over them. Grant us all wisdom, patience, and discernment as we deliberate upon the issues before us. I pray without ceasing for all who are afflicted and whose lives are impacted by this disease we face. Strengthen and support the physicians, nurses, healthcare workers, and the many volunteers who unselfishly serve in an effort to bring aid and comfort. Grant your grace and shelter to all who served to protect our lives and property, as well as those in the military, including the National Guard, as they are called upon to serve in difficult circumstances. Finally, oh God, I pray for our country and its leaders. May they lead both with principle, compassion, and conviction to the ideals of our republic. It's in Christ's name I pray.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, a nation under God and indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we have awards for outstanding library programming. The North Carolina Public Library Directors Association has awarded the Union County Public Library two top programming awards in the large system, library system category for 20 to 2019 to 2020 fiscal year. The first award was for our Black History Arts. And this was organized by Gypsy Houston. Gypsy, if you'll come up and let me present you with this, please, ma'am. And then we'll cover the other.
Hey, sir.
Congratulations for recognition.
Thank you.
Next, we have second award for creating, creating and publishing graphic novels conducted by Amy Helms. Amy, if you'll come up to receive. These awards were presented during the North Carolina PLDA Annual Convention held in December 10. And we have a number today. Melissa McAdams with Community Support and Outreach, five years of service. Lindsay Helms in Finance, five years. Gregory Howey, Information Technology, five years. Paula Atlantis with Human Services, Business Ops, five years. Michael Gallagher with Sheriff's Office, five years. Tony Underwood, Sheriff's Office, five years. Catherine Bernatine, Social Services, five years. Alicia Carrasco, Social Services, five years, and if I butchered that, I apologize. Kristen Jackson, Social Services, five years. Tamara McKinney, Social Services, five years. Winter Moore, Social Services, five years. Kimberly Nelson, Social Services, and Emily Kelly, Tax Administration, all having five years. Kristen Higgins with Information Technology has 10 years. Courtney Ratcliffe, Social Services, 10 years. And with 15 years, Stacy Linsby, Human Services. Alan Nolan and Arthur Wallace, both with Sheriff's Office, 15 years. In January, we had some retirements. William Todd Elmore with the Sheriff's Department with five years. William Smith Cooperative Extension, eight years. Pamela Hypes, Health Department, 12 years. Suzanne Mills, Tax, 15 years. John Arnold, Sheriff's Office, 16 years. Scott Honeycutt, Public Works Engineering, 18 years. And Steve Ramsey with Community Support and Outreach with 28 years. Again, we want to thank them for their service and continued service that they'll be providing for us. Next, we have a public hearing for our rezoning request for Cupson Road CZ 2020-003. Lee?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request that originally came to the board back in July, and it was approved by the board four to one. However, unfortunately, the notice and, and the approval left out one parcel of property, which is the 6.09 acre parcel you see on the map that is highlighted in red. That, that was left out of the motion. It was left out of the notice. So it was not technically rezoned by the board. It was in the applicant's original application, and it was in the original conceptual plan. This is the conceptual plan that was shown back in, and I'm not sure what's going on with the, there we go. This was what was shown in the conceptual plan that was presented to the board back in July. So this has not changed at all. This is just a, really a technical amendment to correct the record, to include that parcel in, in the rezoning request. This did go to the planning board back in January. Planning board reviewed this. They noted that it did appear that it was just a technical amendment, and they unanimously recommended approval. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is not, I, I believe the applicant does have a representative here in case you have any questions, but this was going to be a staff handled initiative here, and I don't think they have a presentation. But I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any question? And this is correcting an oversight, that's my understanding.
Yes, yes, sir. So this, like, again, this was included in the original application and concept plan. Nothing's changed. We just need to correct the record to add this parcel into that rezoning request. And if there's no opposition, we would ask that this be placed on the regular agenda for a decision.
Okay. No questions? Okay. Being that we had a public hearing, and it was for, it's not technically a public hearing today. Next, we have a public hearing for Rodriguez Brothers Investments LLC, Project Line Three, to consider a Step Two Economic Development Incentive Grant in the amount, amount not to exceed $161,000 payout with five years. Good afternoon.
Commissioner Helms, Commissioners, Manager Watson, my name's Ron Mail. I'm Assistant Director of Economic Development. It is my pleasure to bring before you this afternoon an economic development incentive request by Rodriguez Brothers LLC, again, otherwise referred to as Project Line Three. Rodriguez Brothers Investments LLC is the parent corporation of Rodriguez Produce, founded here in Monroe in 2006 by Raul Rodriguez. The company is a wholesale distributor of fresh vegetables and fruits to many retail grocery chains throughout North Carolina, South Carolina, and Georgia. They are currently located on Nelda Drive in Monroe, where they operate out of a 30,000 square foot facility and employ 53 people. The firm wants to expand into markets in Tennessee and Virginia, but need a much larger facility from which to do that. The company is considering Union County for an investment of approximately $7 million that would include the purchase and outfit of the 109,000 square foot Monroe Speculative Building Number Four and the 15 acres on which it sits, all located there in our Monroe Corporate Center. If Union County is selected, capital investment would be approximately $7 million, and job creation would be an additional 10 full-time positions, paying a starting wage of $15 per hour and ratchet up pretty quickly. Our office and the company has been discussing this project since 2019, and they have indicated that incentives are a very important factor for the project. Today, we are requesting your consideration of a Step Two Economic Development Incentive Grant in an amount not to exceed $161,000 over a five-year period based upon the Union County Tax Office's appraised value each year on the company's anticipated investment of $7 million in land, building, and equipment and machinery. Based on this investment, holding all other factors constant, including depreciation, the company would pay estimated ad valorem taxes on the new taxable investment of $255,815 over the grant period. Please note, when we apply the 2021 depreciation schedule and hold all other factors constant, the project will produce approximately $242,000 of ad valorem tax revenue over the grant period, and the grant payout would adjust accordingly to approximately $152,300 over the grant period, of course, due to depreciation. As with all our economic development incentive grants, any money is not expended or are returned to the general fund at the end of each fiscal year. As we do with all of our projects, we've conducted a cost-benefit analysis, and this project shows a 1.69 to 1 return over the first five years of the project, or the grant period, and that increases to 8.63 to 1 ratio over the life of the project, in other words, 10 years and beyond. The Monroe Union County Economic Development Board of Advisors reviewed this project at both their December 8th, 2020 meeting and their January 12th, 2021 meeting, and both times unanimously recommended that we bring it here this afternoon for your consideration. We also presented this project to the Monroe City Council at their January 13th, 2021 meeting, where a similar economic development grant was awarded. Therefore, the Monroe Union County Economic Development Board of Advisors and staff recommend the award of this Step Two Performance-Based Economic Development Incentive Grant to Rodriguez Brothers Investments LLC in an amount not to exceed $161,000 to help secure this $7 million investment. At this point, I'd like to recognize Mr. Eliseo Pasqual, who is a financial advisor with Rodriguez Produce. And Eliseo is available to answer any questions, as am I. With that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Next, we have informal comments. No one has signed up for informal comments, so we will, we will move on. Next, we have additions, deletions, and adoption of the agenda. And I ask that we remove number 15 for further considerations and add number five to whole business. That's the rezoning request for Cupson. Any further changes?
Motion to approve, ma'am.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have our consent agenda. And I'll make a motion that we approve consent as amended. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Hold one minute. We, we put number five right in front of you. And number five was the rezoning request. And do we have a motion to approve this request addition to the previous zoning?
I'll make the motion to approve the weekly request, David Weekly Home request of six acres to be conformed to their previous application that was erroneously left out of the information by us.
Okay. Just a moment.
And can I have that you add the adoption of the consistency statement with that, please, if you wouldn't mind?
Yes.
I'll amend it to adopt the consistency statement.
As well. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Michelle, give us a COVID update for number 18.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, just a brief update on our COVID situation and vaccination plans for the county. And Public Health Director Dennis Joyner is here if there's additional questions that I'm unable to address. So just to give you just a snapshot of where we are, this is actually through yesterday. At the end of the day, we had 2,969 active cases of COVID in Union County, with a total of 16,184 positive cases in Union County through yesterday. 128 deaths and 17.1% positivity rate, which is starting to go in the right direction. If you'll remember the last update I gave, we were a fair, about a percentage and a half point higher than that. So I think we still want to see that probably for a couple of weeks be consistently lower before we have some confidence in that being the lower number. So those are the numbers through yesterday. In terms of vaccination data, as through Friday, we had given 2,981 vaccines at the Human Services Agency. And just to, to give you kind of a flavor, I think a lot of people have been seeing a lot of chatter about vaccination and, and the opening up of that to additional groups. And the state is pressing really hard the importance of getting every dose administered that's been provided to the state of North Carolina from the federal government. And I can assure you that in Union County, we are giving every dose that we get as quickly as we can. Dennis and his staff are scheduling about 350 appointments per day currently. We are working with several of our partners in how we can do even more vaccinations, particularly we're working with Atrium on a potential plan for doing a max vaccination for the plus 65 age group. And we are also working with UCS and partnering with them for teachers who are over the age of 50 for the next age group that would be open to getting vaccinations. So we are continuing to work on those changes in how we schedule and how we are able to administer more doses. And if folks would just go to our website, they are able to fill out a form, and staff will be in touch with them regarding the vaccination. Or you can call our telephone number and make a scheduled opportunity as well. And then lastly, what I would like to say is really just a big thank you to our staff. I told a couple of you earlier, I've worked in local government for a really long time, and I have never received the number of accolades that we have for staff over the last week and a half since we've begun our vaccination process. And I'm not going to read these, but just so folks can see that we're really getting a lot of positive feedback, and we appreciate that. Dennis and his staff, Jackie Morgan and her staff in business operations and how they schedule partnership with emergency management, they've really done a great job, and you all should be proud of the work they're doing. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, or as I said, Dennis is here if you have any questions for him.
Commissioner Simpson?
Just have one question with regard to, I know there's a lot of talk in the media about the availability of the vaccine. What is, what is our, I hesitate to say guarantee, but what is our understanding of the fact that, let's just say, for example, if I got a Pfizer vaccination today, then I'm going to be assured that I'm going to be able to get another Pfizer vaccination in 21 days?
We feel, we feel pretty confident we have gotten our second doses for the first doses that we gave originally of Pfizer and Moderna. We were just both on a call with the state this afternoon at 2:00 with the governor and the secretary. Unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, so they, they, the state gets their notification once a week from the federal government about what will be distributed. We get that same notification following that on Thursday or Friday, I think, according to how the schedule works. At this point in time, North Carolina, the state, is getting 120,000 doses per week. And so they are then distributing that out, really with their message today of they want everything that they've gotten to this point to be distributed within the next seven days so that we can continue to see that stream flowing. So that I have a fairly high level of confidence that you will get the second dose if you got the Pfizer or Moderna through us. And again, we're partnering with the hospital system. They've been great partners. And so Dennis and I had this conversation this morning. We feel, we feel good about where we are in terms of vaccination. Thank you very much.
I'll have to say that I've gotten a lot of communication just raving about the efficiency, professionalism that your staff has demonstrated, and please express our appreciation.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Next item is number 19, and, and I have to say I screwed up. There was, it was a public hearing we didn't have when we first started. There was no one that signed up. I opened a public hearing, no one signed up. I'll close it just before we take up number 19. Number 19 is Rodriguez Brothers Investments. We had the presentation just a minute ago on that. I think that's, that's sufficient. I'll make a motion to approve a Step Two Economic Develop Incentive Grant to Rodriguez Brothers Investments LLC, Project Line Three, in an amount not to exceed $161,000 paid over a five-year period, and authorize the county manager to approve an incentive grant agreement with Rodriguez Brothers Investment LLC pending legal review. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate y'all's participation in the county. Next item is Marshville Bypass Planning. Afternoon, gentlemen.
Evening, Commissioner Helms, members of the board. Chris is going to pull up the slideshow. Next slide, please. So this is part of the regional transportation planning process with the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization. They are currently updating their long-range plan, which goes out to 2050, and are soliciting projects. One of the projects that we could submit is the Marshville Bypass. As a part of that is a request to have a tolling study conducted by the North Carolina Turnpike Authority to determine if that would be an appropriate and effective extension of essentially the Monroe Bypass. This is something that's a joint approval request with the town of Marshville. They took action a couple of weeks ago at their town council meeting, so they, they support both requests. Next slide, Chris. So, you know, what's, what's been the result of the Monroe Bypass? In the two years it's been open, we have data, it's always, always lags a year, so we have 2019 data. You can see that before 2019, things were pretty flat. In the eastern part of the county, in, in almost 20 years, you hadn't seen any change in traffic volumes, and that's in a county that had doubled in population. Then you see what happens in 2019, the first year after the Monroe Expressway opens, and it did essentially what it was designed to do. The volumes near Wingate and Monroe went down. The volumes where the Monroe Bypass or Expressway connects back into 74, volumes went up, and they went up a good bit. And this was something that Frank Dees and members of the town council in Marshville had been saying for quite a while, anecdotally, that things were really increasing. So the demand is there to now talk about a bypass of Marshville, and the first step in it is to submit it for consideration of inclusion in, in Carpo's long-range plan. Next slide. So this is consistent with previous planning efforts. The 2018 corridor study through Marshville, one, to look at what the design of 74 should be through the town, and then secondly, to reconfirm their support for the bypass. That did both. It made some recommendations for operational improvements through the town and also reconfirmed the town's support for the bypass. Secondly, the NC DOT recently completed a corridor study for US 74 from Polk County in the mountains all the way to Wilmington, and the design was for a freeway, which means that you need to have bypasses like this in order to help create that future vision. And lastly, the current planning process for the Union County 2050 Conference of Plan noted that interstate status is really necessary for the county to continue economic development efforts. We're left off of a lot of lists because we don't have interstate access. And by creating the Marshville Bypass in the future, it really moves us forward to having future designation of US 74 as, and as a future interstate all the way to the coast. Next slide. So there's two requests for action, but before you, first is resolution submitting this bypass as a candidate project in the long-range plan. The second is to request the Turnpike Authority to evaluate the bypass as a toll facility. This study would be conducted at no cost to the county or the town, it's conducted by them. This would be the second one they've done. The first one was for the Wade'sboro Bypass. That was done a couple of years ago. The results from that were fairly neutral, and the first half of the bypass has since been funded in the North Carolina DOT STIP. So that, that project's moving ahead. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Was this project not pre-studied? I mean, it was on the plans in years past, and then it was withdrawn? Marshville asked it to be withdrawn. Are we duplicating?
No, we're not, we're not duplicating. They had concerns four years ago for the previous long-range plan, and at the time, they did have concerns about the impact of the bypass on the town itself, essentially taking business away from their existing core. But that 2018 corridor study essentially confirmed that the town does want, the residents do want the project, and it, it would be needed in the future. So they, they withdrew that position.
Okay.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Do we, I don't like the idea of the pen, you know, to put the opposite of the toll road there. I think that, you know, is this going to cause us to lose road money somewhere else, or is it, is we're going to get another toll road now other counties get road funding? Explain exactly what, what?
Well, if we don't, if the project doesn't get funded in the first place, then, then we have nothing. But having it told, first off, if, if it turns out that tolling, it will generate enough revenue to pay for the, you know, capital improvement of putting in all the gantries and everything, and deliver money to help pay for the construction of it, which was the case with the Monroe Expressway, then this would allow that project to be built sooner, or potentially be built at all, because maybe it's not competitive enough if we can't reduce the cost by having some tolling. You know, the fears of, of people not using the Monroe Expressway have not come to pass. The volumes were ahead of projections, and they have really not dipped much recently at all, despite all the economic impacts of COVID. And it's pretty consistent with a lot of other controlled access facilities that are being built in the region, 485, 77 North, any additional 485 improvements that are going to be made in Mecklenburg County are going to be managed land type of projects. So tolling is going to occur on, on more facilities like this throughout the region.
Do you have questions?
One more.
May we vote on those as separate items? You have a problem voting on those?
Sure.
Would you put those items back up? Okay, I see it now. I'd like to make a motion that we submit as a candidate project to the CRTPO, to 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. And first, just make that motion to do that.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Second portion. To request submit the Turnpike Authority of feasibility of a toll Okay. Second portion. To request submit the Turnpike Authority feasibility of a toll project.
Are you making that motion?
I can make that motion. Go ahead. No, you make, you make it.
I make the motion that we do not request submission to the Turnpike Authority.
Any discussion? Question?
Yes, sir.
Your, is that, is that, as I read it, it says feasibility, it says?
That's correct.
Does that preclude me from later on? It says we all make a toll?
All this, all this study says?
It'd be a toll, what, against the, for a toll?
All this, all this motion would do is authorize them to conduct a study, and it would say, with this facility, here's the type of volume you would see on it, and there's the type of role, of revenue you would see from that, and therefore, it's positive or neutral or negative to have it as a told facility. Doesn't, it doesn't commit us to anything. It just studies it to say what the revenues would be, and the volumes would be to have it as a told facility versus a free facility.
Well, I certainly respect the Commissioner Russell's opinion there. I'm the same way. I'm right 25 miles out of the way to keep, to have, to pay 20 cent toll, but I don't see anything wrong with the study and feasibility.
Can we amend that to say feasibility of a toll project or conventional roadway?
The only, the only concern that I, I really have in it is that, you know, if we, if we stand firm that we don't want it to be a toll, that we'd like to get our road money like everybody else gets their road money. I mean, there's a nice bypass around Hamlet and Rockingham that I don't think's a toll road. We have a toll road. We've done our, Union County's done our part for the toll. Union County citizens pay a toll, they love it. I had a guy tell me the other day, he said, "I can get to Indian Trail Baptist Church with my children faster than I could when I lived on the south side of 74 in Indian Drive." So, I mean, I, I have no doubt that that road is a great road, that road is a, an asset to the county, but we've done our part as a toll road to go, I think, for now. And I'd rather hear what they have to say. I'd rather put it on as not being a toll road than give any openness that we want another toll road in Union County. That, that's just the position I'll take. And not, you know, not, again, I've drive on the toll road. I've had some issues with it. You're familiar, when I came back with nasty letters with cars that didn't belong to me and things like that. But again, I think Union County's done our part as far as the toll, Turnpike Authority goes, and I would like for our road money to come rather than chance of another toll road.
Mr. Ray.
Bjorn, did Marshville approve it, the resolution as requested to do the toll part?
I think I'm just going to sit up here now. They, they did approve their resolution. And, and if I may, the corridor study that was done for Marshville in 2018, one, one of the reasons they supported it, particularly as a, as a bypass and, and tolling, was a fear of too much traffic being diverted away from their existing commercial areas, and they felt that the told aspect of it would only eliminate the traffic that never wanted to be in their core anyway. So it would keep some of the traffic that wanted to spend money through Marshville as it, you know, went wherever it was going. And, and by tolling, presumably, you would keep some of that traffic on the existing 74.
And I think, again, the, the concerns that I think people would have is, you know, a lot of people gave up property, gave up land, gave up, you know, homes for the toll road to be put in. And again, it's a benefit to the rest of us, but for all those people who gave up, you know, I'd like to see at least be paid for by, by the state with our gas money and with the money that we've already contributed, Union. And, and even that, you know, I'd never see a traffic jam in Marshville. When I go through Marshville, I probably travel Marshville as much as anybody on the board. It's not like it's massive amounts of traffic backing up that I've seen. I could be wrong, and it could be different in 2050, or we might be flying helicopters all by then, so who knows? But I would like to see our road money come to us, and, and I'd like this board to send a message to the state, it's time for your, our money. It's time for you to give us our money and quit pushing tolls on Union County.
Mr. Ray.
On my brief tenure on the Charlotte CARPO Committee, I think if we don't support the toll part of it, it will be a kiss of death, and the state will go somewhere else. I mean, I agree about paying tolls, but 25 miles out of the way versus a toll, always, it costs me 20 cent a mile, basically, to drive my car just gas, so.
And, and again, I don't think, that's not what I'm, I'm not saying whether there's a benefit or not, but if we were going to get this money, I mean, I almost even thought about this, of saying, would that money not be better spent on 16, on Old Monroe Road, and places in Union County that are backed up completely with traffic, than putting it on traffic that, where there's really not a traffic jam?
But that's not the question here, and they won't let us move it.
I know that's not the question, but.
And they won't let us move it, and they will take it and put it somewhere else if we don't go along with their vision. Isn't that right, Bjorn?
Well, it certainly helps if you're consistent with the vision, but yeah, we don't have the ability to move money from one project to another.
We can't. We can't move money.
And, yeah, and that's why, like I said, I would like to see us fight for our money. I guess that's the best, whether they like it or don't like it, you know, we just, at some point, we've got to fight for our money. Both you and Commissioner Helms have fought for our money on that, that CRTPO, and, and y'all see the fight that's ahead of us, and until we start challenging this a little bit, I don't think we're, you know, we, at some point, we have to challenge it, and, and this might be the point.
Well, I think, I think the, the challenge in it days have already left, and with COVID and people doing distance commute, I mean, doing go-to meetings, gas usage is going down, down, down. And I was talking to Commissioner Williams, they've just approved money for walking trails and natural areas out of the CARPO fund. So I say, let the state build it and let them tax the people that use it. You know, you'll still be able to not get on the turnpike, but we're just, we're saying no to some state money that will get spent somewhere.
Can you describe for us a little more what this feasibility study entails? What is it exactly the NCDOT will be studying and analyzing?
Well, they're going to look at the, you know, status quo, which is these, these 74. They're going to look at the, the volumes of commuters, as well as truck traffic, and, and where it's going, because a fair amount of it's going to go to Marshville, to the existing poultry plants in particular, and what percent is just trying to get through, and then putting in a, a facility that is presumably faster, and comparing how much traffic would divert, and their sensitivity to different prices of tolls, what, and, you know, considering that there already is a told facility immediately adjacent to it, what would be the impact of the existing toll rate extending to it, or would it need to be different in order to attract people? And then coming up with the, with the recommendations based on those results.
So it would include potential fares probably along a spectrum, and how much revenue might be raised given a, a certain fare and traffic combination?
That's right. And, and compare it to just having it as a free bypass.
Okay. And, and there's no cost to this at all to Union County or the municipality for?
That's correct.
Initiating the study? To my view, I mean, I think information's power. Marshville clearly is interested in seeing this study done. I'm not opposed to having the study done. I'm not sure what benefit a study would be if we didn't include the effect of a potential range of tolls given the traffic. So I'm in favor of it. I share the frustration, and I think of probably all the commissioners, in terms of, you know, the history of getting funds from CARPO for our transportation needs. But, you know, this is simply, to my mind, just approving a study that we don't have to pay for, and I have no objection to that.
One more thing. We already know gas tax revenue goes to light rail in Charlotte. Isn't that correct?
Not directly.
But it does end up there, because supposedly it takes traffic off of the roads. And, and also, I have seen some items where we, we paid for sightings to keep railroad trains parked outside of towns, and the railroad paid very little of it. So as far as fighting for our money, the, we're fighting with our hands tied behind our back. Until we get help out of Raleigh, we better take everything they offer to give us until we get some control on the way highway funds are dispersed.
You know, I, I withdraw my motion, and to my ultimate, the motion to approve if they'd like.
Well, I think my concern is, is I have no problem with doing a turnpike toll road study, but I want them also to tell me what the free road would do.
That's right.
When, when it's going to be built, you know, what the difference in the completion would be, one avenue compared to the other.
I don't know that it's going to be able to give you that information, because it'll tell you how much money that generates, and then you would have to be able to apply that to the project to say, okay, previously it was $100 million, and now it's $75 million. And then how does that change its prioritization within the state process, which occurs every couple of years? So that, that feedback loop, you're not going to get right away.
Well, is it not the state attempting to make 74 an interstate as opposed to a highway?
That's correct. Well, they want it to be a freeway. A freeway is just a design. The interstate is a designation. You can request the interstate designation if you're committed to building a freeway.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution requesting the North Carolina Turnpike Authority evaluate Marshville Bypass as a told facility, and please make sure there's no Marshville bollweevils found like the hill splitters before.
Will do.
Any further comments?
Is that part of your motion, or is that just a matter of thought?
All right. We have a motion to approve as a told facility, study that it be a told facility. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have Union EMS 2020 Year End Report. I think Brian, you, you want to share that with us today?
Good afternoon, Board of Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. Do you want to bring the slide presentation up? Can we do it from here, Patrick? There we go. Got a lot of information to present, so if it's okay with you, part of my notes I'm going to read, just to make sure I don't miss anything. We do have a lot of things to cover. Next slide.
He might have, he might have got it fixed in the meantime. It looks like you have control of it now.
Okay. Yeah, there we go. So first of all, I want to give a thanks to the leadership of ATRIM, the leadership of the county, county manager's office, Patrick Nealon, who has been great to work with since he took his spot, county manager, Mr. Mike Lutz, president of ATRIM as well, been great to work with and have, given a lot of support. I think there's been an agreement in place with the county since 1996. We've seen a lot of changes over those years, and we have a lot of accomplishments over those years. Without the support that we've had and the support that we've enjoyed, we would not have the great EMS service that we currently have. Just quickly, objectives we want to cover today is I want to highlight some of the wins that our agency has seen over the last year, and a review of a few of the financial reports and some of the comparisons as well. I'd like to illustrate the response and transport statistics, as well as discuss some of the challenges that lie ahead for Union EMS. One of our biggest assets that we've set from year to year, and especially this year, we'd like to point out, is not only the things that we have that we utilize every day, the equipment that we have, the medical equipment, but our biggest asset is, number one, the people. The people of the county, the people of our community, as well as our teammates. The community itself supports what we do. We appreciate everything they have supported over the last few years, especially this year with all this going on. And we really appreciate the working relationship that we've developed between the teammates as well as the commission, or as well as the, the community itself. This picture here, I just wanted to point out, is a key example. We'll get into this picture a little bit later on. That is Mr. Kevin Tillot. He was a recipient of a cardiac arrest survivor this year. He was one of our survivors. It was celebrated at the 2020 Hearts and Hands. Seated with him is his wife, and to his left is Ms. Sarah Haynes. Sarah is a EMT working with us, just finished paramedic school, so she's getting ready to test, but she is also dating his son. I'm not sure if they're engaged or not. If they are, I don't want to give anything away yet, say anything premature, but they do have a close relationship with Union EMS, and she just happened to be one of those that was on the other side of the equation to experience what it's like to be a recipient of the care we give. The outpouring of support that we've received this past year has been one that has been unprecedented. If it had not been for the support that we received, there's been days we don't know how we have got through. Some of the dinners that were brought by, the lunches that were brought by, the snacks, the masks that we received, it's just been phenomenal. We cannot extend our thanks enough to those who have been responsible for the outpouring of love and the outpouring of caring. This picture here is from the Union County Crime Stoppers. Commissioner, as you well know, we do greatly appreciate it when y'all provided lunch for us one day this past year. It is things like that that has shown us and has demonstrated that the community truly cares about the service we give. They truly care about our well-being and then what we do. It is our job in turn to return that favor to them the best we possibly can. There's been a number of churches in our county and community that have really shown an outpouring of love, some of these being Lee Park, as well as Mill Creek Baptist Church. There's been many, many other churches in the area that have just tremendously supported us in every way they possibly can. One of the things I was asked to give a brief overview of is our leadership structure. This is just a very quick breakdown of how Union EMS operates, with our leadership and our rank and file, if you would. Obviously, Mr. Lutz is the president of the Southeast Division that is oversees us, that I report to. Directly under that is myself. We have Kim Karpovich as our office manager. To the side, we have our medical director, as well as Donna Little. A note here is, Donna Little is our community paramedicine patient navigator. She has a position that is funded by ATRIM Care, giving the work over to Union EMS to assist that project. Community paramedicine has been something that has been tremendously successful since its inception two years ago. Under that, we break it down into two separate areas, operations and education and professional development. Mr. Jeff Peterson is over. His group area within itself has six supervisors. The number off to the side of each is the number of direct reports that report to each individual supervisor in the area that they oversee. We have Mr. Dunaway, who came to us last year. We brought him in, we recruited him from Adel State. He actually came from the Medical University of South Carolina and from one of the local community colleges in the area to head up that division. He has done a tremendous job and a phenomenal job in bringing that division around and taking these, taking us to where we need to be, be it our accreditation, be it our education standards, everything involved in the professional development.
Brian, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
These, this management team, are they, what kind of level? Are they paramedic level?
Yes, sir. Everyone in a management position, or I should say, a leadership position, is of the paramedic level. That's correct. Next, we'll talk a little bit about demand. Before I can really give the numbers, I just want you to understand that I've broken this down into two areas, responses and transports. For every transport, there is a response, but for every response, there's not necessarily a transport. Last year, we seen 23,505 responses. Now, some of those calls, some of those responses could have had multiple patients, with a large number of them having no patients. We average about six, between 60 and 70% transport rate, which does meet the national average. That is very typical of national standards. Some see higher, some see lower, depending upon the local protocols. Us following North Carolina protocols, it gives us indication of what we can treat, what we cannot treat, and what we can leave behind, and what we must take to the hospital. Of that, 55%, a little over 55% are considered life-threatening. Another 25% is potentially life-threatening, 14% being non-life-threatening, and then the 5% being the not emergency and scheduled type calls. Transports are divided into codes 1, 2, and 3, just depending upon their level of acuity of acuity, and then also we have the scheduled division. Responses was, I believe, only twenty-one calls under what we had projected for this year. We were on track to far surpass our, far surpass our projection. What hindered us was the onset of COVID back in, when it began in this area around February. People stopped calling ambulances. They stopped calling the fire departments, their first responders, they stopped going to the hospital. Now, that only lasted for a short period and it has since then recovered and has surpassed all trends from the last. So we're back trending to where we were to breaking records. But we closed out the year and June thirtieth by coming just under our predictions for that.
Will you give us an explanation of the code one, two, and three?
Yes, sir.
What constitutes that and what is scheduled?
Scheduled is any patient that goes to a doctor's office or to a facility for a pre-scheduled event. It could be to a dentist's office, a non-ambulatory patient from a nursing facility. It could be a patient going from a residence to a doctor's office, any of those that meets a criteria where they don't have the ability to drive themselves or to get there in a car. They are non-ambulatory bedridden patients. Code one is of the lowest acuity, needs to go to the hospital, but it doesn't need to go licensed siring. Code two is best described as they need to go right now, not necessarily licensed siring, but it could turn to an unstable patient and could be licensed siring. Code three is of the highest emergency. They need to go immediately, licensed siring. It could become unstable before, it is unstable upon transport. Everything we can do to get them there before anything else happens to them. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
I have a question too.
Okay.
I didn't know until recently that we used a lot of outside county agencies to transport.
We don't use a lot of outside agencies to transport. We do utilize outside agencies to transport, just as they use us to transport too. There is a mutual aid agreement throughout the state of North Carolina that it gives one county the ability to function in another county. Now, for every one time that they come in, there's equal times that we go out to decide to cover their county as well. We can wait twenty minutes for one of our ambulances to clear, to clear up, or we can get an ambulance that possibly is closer in five or six minutes. And the only division, the only clarification is a simple county line. The protocols that we operate under are very similar throughout the state of North Carolina.
What's our average response time?
We can get to that in just a minute or I can tell you right now. I want to make sure I give you the absolute precise information. We don't measure in an average response time. We average in the ninetieth percentile, which simply means ninety percent of the time, all patients are responded to and under this one. If it's okay with you, can you wait just a couple of slides? I want to make sure I get it. I've got it in one of the slides here. Any other questions before I move on? So as far as our response and transport that it goes, we have continually seen an increase since basically FY two thousand fourteen up until this year, this current reporting period. Again, that is, it is surmised that that comes from COVID when our numbers severely dropped off in comparison to what we had expected them to be. Again, those numbers have since rebounded, so we expect that to be far higher than what it is, what it was the first part, first part of this year. So this being our response times, I've got another slide here I want to present in just a moment, but Union County divides its county up into three response areas, be it the core, which is right around the city of Monroe, right around Highway seventy-four, the inner, which is the outlying bands around that, and then the outer, which is considered the rule. This does follow national standards and recommendations of those who monitor this nationally. There's very few EMS agencies in North Carolina who break down their response times and monitoring as closely as we do. Actually, I don't, I only know of two other, possibly three other counties throughout North Carolina who as closely monitor response times as we do. Those are being the more metropolitan, more urban type areas. So to answer your question, our overall compliance was twelve minutes and twenty-six seconds this past year. Our goal is twelve minutes and twenty-nine seconds, so we did meet that goal overall. And again, that is measured in the ninetieth percentile. That is not average. Our average response time runs right around the seven minutes, I believe fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-five seconds. So we're far better than our average, but at the same time, we feel that measuring in a ninetieth percentile gives us a much better idea of where we're at and what we are actually responding to. Again, it goes back to ninety percent, top ninety percent of the time, we have responded to every person who calls an ambulance. Breaking it down into the outer zone is fifteen forty-one. Our goal in that, I believe, is fifteen fifty-nine. Inner goal, our inner zone was thirteen oh five. We met that again. It was thirteen fifty-nine with our goal, as well as the core zone, which is ten fifty-nine, and that was, I believe, eleven minutes. I've got that on the next slide. We'll show you exactly what it is. Or the next one, I apologize for that. This is a map that shows where the zones are divided up. It is, it's just, it's hard to understand and hard to monitor the same response time in the city across the street from an EMS base as it is in, say, an area where it's basically farmland. Deserve the same level of care, they get the same level of care, but realistically, it's hard to drive that far and get there in that same amount of time. The only way we could do that successfully is put a tremendous more units out there to accomplish that drive time to cover it. And again, this is the times here, the county under twelve fifty-nine. Our core is eleven fifty-nine, our inner thirteen twenty-nine, and our outer being fifteen fifty-nine. We average less than, our goal is less than thirty minutes for our turn time. That basically says from the time we arrive at the hospital until the time we leave is under thirty minutes, and we have met that successfully. Yes.
About that, it seems strange, I guess, that New Salem area of around two hundred and two eighteen can, can get faster response time than, let's say, Hunter Oaks or Somerset and Marvin. I mean, even, we have a lot of density over there. How is the new program working out where they, where they are not stationed at a, at a fire department?
The dynamic deployment? It has worked, but it is time for us to look at it and really put some eyes on how it's working and what we can do to tweak it. We think there's some better ideology that can go behind it. It's great in that it puts ambulances out there roving. The downside is something that no one has ever studied before. When they design these programs, it's what it does to the people itself. It is very detrimental to the people that sit in an ambulance for twelve hours at a time. Union County having the number of trucks that we do in the area that we have to cover overall indicates that if you put those trucks out there, you're only going to average two to three calls per truck, per shift. Now, taking about an hour to an hour and a half, sometimes upwards of two hours to completely, complete a call, if it takes two hours, say at the extreme, then that's another eight hours left that they have not, they don't have an assignment. Now, if you take these personnel, these teammates, and put them in a truck and they sit for eight hours, it's just hard on their bodies. That's something that the man, a gentleman by the name of Jack Stout, who designed this program many years ago, said that he can tell you all day long what response times do and what needs to be done to design a system to get a truck there. But he also stated that there's never been a study to show or to indicate what this system does to a human body. So while it's good for response time, it's great for response times, it does take its toll. And I think it's time for us to take a good set of eyes, look upon it, a lot of opinions, and think about how we deploy this. There are some ways I think we could do it with minimal cost change at all, if there is any change, could do it cost savings.
Let me ask you a question because a couple of us participated in the original when we did the modification of what's being done. What I, and I, I've looked at your presentation through it. One thing I didn't see, and what I'm getting complaints about, is the availability of units day and night. Initially, when y'all, when we contracted with you, and I understand it wasn't put into contract, clearly understand that, but the commitment was made to keep a certain level of ambulances during the day and a certain at night. And my understanding is that's not happening.
I'll be the first to tell you it's not. Due to staffing levels, due to COVID and a myriad of other issues, it is just not physically possible. Now, we've got some things in play that we hope to pull the triggers on very soon to get things back to where we hope is manageable, but we are averaging in the past year since, I believe it was since April of last year, we've had almost seven thousand hours missed due to COVID, just COVID alone. This goes back to what we were talking a minute ago about being hard on a body. Our rates of OJIs on the job injuries, our workman's comp, and other things are higher than EMS systems not of this design model. It's just hard on a body. And with those things, in addition, there being such a national shortage of paramedics, it is next to impossible for us to continually find paramedics to fill the spots.
Let me ask you another question. If you are short, do your supervisors ride an ambulance?
Certainly do. Yep, myself, Mr. Peterson back there, we also do it. One of the things we've been fortunate enough over the last couple of weeks is assisting Dennis and his crew at the Health Department. So our teammates who are on light duty, that can't function in the back of an ambulance, they have to find other things. We have to find other things for them to do. One of the things we chose to do is to re-task them in other areas. They can do patient care all day long. They just can't lift, they can't do the things that hinder them from being proficient or efficient, I should say, due to their injuries. We've had anywhere from one to six over there every day during their, during the vaccination clinics. It's been a great working relationship so far. I've told Dennis, I've made it clear to our scheduling and others involved, if there's a day when they're, when they're short, myself, Jeff, as well as our other training officer, our training officer will be there giving shots as well. And also, in situations where we're running short, either myself or Jeff or Mike, one will step back into a supervisor's office and they do a cascade effect to jump on the trucks.
Question, any question?
Yes, sir.
Could you make a comparison of twenty fourteen to this and so we can see if the decisions that we made back in that, over the years have?
In relation to?
Yeah, has it done, well, like this map, for example?
Back then, we were covering the entire map. Our times were very good back then. It was very tight in the outreaches. It was almost, it wasn't impossible, but we were very tight. But what we saw is along the core areas, there was such a tremendous amount of calls in that area, it equaled everything out. So the numbers were good. This gives us a better indication, by doing it this way, it gives a better indication of where the actual responses are, what the actual times are. So I can have one that's responding to in this area that takes twenty minutes and this one that responds to in five minutes, but as a whole, it averaged out. This gives us a better indication of where we are actually performing or underperforming.
So I guess I'm looking at Waxall, which is the outer area. Almost the town of Waxall is in the outer area. The town of Marvin and Weddington are basically kind of the outer areas. And, you know, I can understand down where I live, where we don't have a lot of people, but we used to have, where we used to have ambulances based at Lanes Creek, it's in the outer area almost or close to it. Well, I guess I'm asking is, did we make the right decisions? Just because it's more profitable or quicker, because the more calls in the city, doesn't mean the person's life in, in New Salem or Alton or Marvin or Fairview are less important. So, so, you know, again, what I'd like to see is the, do we do better timing on the average or are we doing worse timing on the outer? Kind of a compare, whenever you started doing these maps, I remember these maps from years ago. So what was it back then compared to what is it now? And, and what's the plan?
So we've submitted a plan to the county. The County Manager's Office has in their hands one of the things that we're looking at as far as relocating ambulances and in some areas doubling up units. For instance, Waxall Marvin area, we have recommended there be two ambulances there instead of just one, knowing that that call volume has dramatically increased over the years. In order to do it the way we currently operate, we don't like to double up trucks because if you've got two trucks in this area, then that's going to leave another area, broader area, open without coverage. Whereas what we're recommending doing is restrategically locating these trucks accordingly into the stations and in some cases putting double units, again, Waxall being one of those areas. Waxall is an area that has just seen a tremendous growth, as you very well know, I'm sure, over the past five years. We don't see that slowing down. And if we're going to do a good job of this, we've got to continue to put eyes on it to make the adjustments that are needed.
Does the hospital there not help? Does the hospital not help being right there on sixteen?
Help, as in?
Is anybody going there for emergency calls?
Yeah. We transport there as well as the Union in addition to Charlotte area hospitals, but as far as nine-one-one response goes, we haven't really seen that much of a difference.
There's, there's some things on there that are kind of surprising. That's, that's why I said I'd like to see a comparison to see.
Yeah, absolutely.
It might be better, but it just looks, you know, some of the information looks odd.
Now, please understand that each square on here is an area that is individualized. That square is individually monitored. So just because you say green, that doesn't mean it's all of that area. Each one of those squares is monitored and we can track that individually. If that makes any sense, I may have confused you there.
Well, I remember the same information that Commissioner Rushin was talking out. You, you got shoot time of sixty seconds. When we started this, it was over three and a half minutes. And, and I can, we've had conversation about the employees being uncomfortable in vehicles. And I know that I personally had conversations with some of our fire departments on availability for comfort relief if they get into that situation. But I think what's most important is someone having a heart attack or stroke, they don't have that extra time. And I think one of the keys is, you talked about wanting to put two. One of the keys is having that availability that we discussed in the past.
Excuse me?
And, and I, I don't remember this board changing the requirements that we discussed.
This map was put together at the request of the county.
Oh, okay, fine. But I'm just, I'm saying, my concern is that we have the, you know, I, one of the things people tell me, it's very comforting to know that there's an ambulance in the vicinity. And the whole purpose in doing that was to reduce that response time.
Right.
Because when we originally had this conversation, the proposal was to bring all the ambulances at night back into the hospital. And I can tell you, especially in Western Union County, traffic's such that it, it's horrendous to think you can get from spot A to spot B in a reasonable.
I agree.
And so that's why I'm questioning, I'd like to see the past two years' history on availability of teams working. I understand that there's, that there's situations where people calling sick and things like that. That's why I ask about, are your supervisors filling in that slot when it, when it happens? So I'd like to see you come back and tell us that before we look at what you're presenting to the county.
Okay, absolutely. Be glad to. Again, this goes back into what I was discussing just a moment ago. What you're saying is correct. I agree with you. I don't argue that in any way, shape, or form. That's why we're making the recommendation of looking at what we're doing, the way we do it, and making these changes. I can make a recommendation, you can make a recommendation, Jeff, anybody can make a recommendation, but I think having the eyes of those involved in this are the ones that's going to make the appropriate decisions. I have no qualms, no arguments with anything you're saying. I completely agree with you. And again, that is the reason we're making some of these recommendations, putting them back in the areas closer to the areas. Going back to slide before, where we see that in the core zone, last year, we had seven thousand three hundred and eighty-four calls for service, whereas in the outer zone, we had fourteen hundred calls. So that's a big difference. So in order to meet those times, the same time for both zones, it can be done, but it would just take more resources to do it. I completely understand what you're saying.
Well, that was the reason we had that conversation in the first place, because I understand there's higher volumes here, but I believe we've added some ambulances since that time.
It's been the same since I've got here. You may have, but before I came in, we haven't, since I've been.
Since our initial conversation.
Right.
When we did, when we did the contract. I know several ambulances have been added. And it was to facilitate the availability in all areas.
Right.
So I, I would appreciate to know how we have fared on the availability of ambulances.
Absolutely. Any other questions? And you were talking about the shoot time. We, I'm sorry.
Did you have something, Dennis?
The shoot times that you were mentioning just a moment ago. The shoot times that you were mentioning just a moment ago, we have met that consistently for the last five years. We have not missed that, to my knowledge. So we're still, we're putting the ambulances out there, we're turning tires as quickly as we possibly can. There's just a lot of things that, that have gone into this that have changed since this was first started back in, I think this group met in 14, 13 or 14, I believe it was. So having that period of time, it, it's time to put eyes on it again. I agree.
Yes, sir.
I've been on this board two years and two months. And one thing I've heard in conversations about outside the dice, was it originally set up the district, y'all were supposed to report as quarterly?
Mm-hmm. I'm not aware of that.
Yes, we are.
To the board or to county?
To the board. That was the initial conversation.
It could have been. I've never been advised of that. Be more than happy to. I've, actually, what I've asked before...
We'll take you up on that.
I'm sorry?
And we'll take you up on that.
I'd be more than happy to. And I look at it like, I want each one of you at any given time to be able to pick up the phone when you have a question and call me. If, there's no way you're going to get an answer to what you're looking for unless you have that conversation. At any given time, be it eight o'clock in the morning or eight o'clock at night, you need to have what you're looking for because I understand the concept of your constituents coming to you asking questions. And if you don't have the information behind it, you can't give them an answer. I agree with that.
Well, the biggest thing, the reason I ask, Commissioner Simpson, Rushin and Hems have a history of dealing with you. You know, this is sort of like drinking from a fire hose for me and all I've had is comments, you know, just to go ahead and get it out there. Another comment I have from fire departments is all they really, they, y'all make them load the people up and that's really all they do there.
And that's, so the first responders, when it comes to their availability, I shouldn't say their availability, what they do is very, very limited compared to what a paramedic does. The designation or the ability of a first responder in the state of North Carolina is to basically do a quick assessment and then assist the EMS crew. They have a very, I'm not going to say short class, about a three-month program to get through to be a first responder, whereas a paramedic, almost unfailingly, is a very minimum of a associate's degree. If you go through a certificate program, you're still looking at 16, 18 months. So there's a vast, vast difference of what they do. So when we get there, we don't step back and tell the first responder, they've got it. Their job, and they'll tell you that it's their job, they are to assess the patient and once we come in, they give us the report of what they have, what they found, step back, we assume patient care and then they assist us from there.
And, and do you have an idea of what, I mean, I don't, I have no idea what your people on the ambulances make? What do they start out at?
Starting salary is somewhere in the neighborhood, Jeff, can you help me out with that? I believe it is somewhere right around, for a basic EMT is somewhere around the mid-30s, I believe, mid $30,000. Top end for a paramedic is upward of around the upper 40s.
So a $15 an hour hamburger flipper will make about the same money?
Unfortunately, yes. One of our neighboring counties recently called us and asked for a salary comparison and we provided them with that. And we found out the reason they were asking for it is because a part-time person that worked for animal services, whose responsibility was cleaning the cages, was making more than their EMTs were. EMS in not only North Carolina, but throughout the nation is woefully underfunded when it comes to salaries. You're talking about a paramedic who does basically the exact same thing and in some cases more than a, than a registered nurse in a hospital does, an RN. But yet they're stuck in a truck for 12 hours, they grab a bite when they can grab it, they get, I'm not going to say they get no respect because they do get respect, but they don't get the same level of respect. It's just a very difficult working situation for them. They work in the cold, they work in the heat, they work in the rain, the snow, the sleet, everything you can possibly imagine. That's why nationwide, they're starting to see a exit of paramedics going to the hospitals to work, going to emergency departments, going into private practice, simply because they can't make the money that is deserving of what they do in the working environments they need to do. There is a national shortage of paramedics and nowhere is it seen more than in Union County and nor, throughout the state of North Carolina.
When you come back in three months, will you have a plan of how we can reward paramedics and ensure that we're not, we're not losing them to unfair compensation?
Absolutely. We have seen, we do the studies and we do the exit interviews, we talk to them, we understand why they're leaving and one of the main, there are two main reasons that they're leaving. Number one, it is for another agency or another department, another job, or number two, it's the dynamic deployment that is killing their bodies. That's the two reasons they give us every single time. Now, there are a few others. We've had a few that have gone to the military over the years, we've had a few that's gone to the fire service or just got out of it altogether. But by far, those are the vast reasons they leave EMS. And we've tracked that ever since 2015.
Well, where did the idea of this dynamic deployment come from?
Commissioner, can you, Chairman, can you help us with that?
We'll talk offline.
Okay.
It, it, it came from a consultant.
Okay. I'm not saying, dynamic deployment does work, that is not a doubt. But I think Union County is one of those situations where the only two agencies in North Carolina that use dynamic deployment is Union and Mecklenburg. We're not Mecklenburg County, by no stretch of the imagination. But at the same time, that doesn't mean we can't take a hybrid version, part static deployment in stations and part dynamic deployment where the roving, that's the proposal that we've made. And that would give us every single time, unfailingly, better coverage, better response and better availability. Plus, it gives the teammates a better ability to get a little bit of relaxation, a little bit of rest and downtime in between calls as opposed to sitting in a truck all the time.
Well, what the 50/50 give on a welcome break, let's say on their shift, if it was a four-day shift, they would spend two days in dynamic deployment and two days in static?
So what we're proposing is something very similar to that, yes. Yep.
Real quickly, it may be an effect to people watching and the new commissioners. Can maybe you or Mark or combination explain how the funding, who, whose employees or EMT, you know, a little bit of that information, like where the money comes from for the ambulances, where the money comes from for the employees? Who does the hiring? Who does the firing?
Um, I think if you'll give me just a moment, hang in there, we can answer that in one of the slides. And please, if it doesn't completely answer your, your question, come back to me and ask whatever you'd like further in the presentation. Real quick, I just wanted to show you this slide. This is a study done by the Journal of American Medicine, one of the most respected publications in the nation. They studied the arrival times of an ambulance throughout the nation into three categories, the suburban, the urban and the rural. That is most closely aligned to our, what we've referred to as the inner, the core and the outer zones. The arrival time national, again, they measure 90 percentile also in it, just like we do. Their, and this is rounded, they rounded their numbers, we kept ours to the second. Suburban, which is our inner, is 14 minutes, ours was 13:05. Urban being the core in 12 minutes, ours 10:54. The rural, which is the outer, was 26 minutes, national standards, national average. Ours was 15:42, so we're much, much better than the national average with that, with an overall standard of 14, 90th percentile, ours being 12:24. We, get into what you were talking about real quick. We contractually partner with a group called EMSMC. It's EMS Management Consultants out of, I believe, Winston-Salem. They are an entity that is the largest in the nation. They specialize in billing services for EMS agencies. They have in North Carolina alone, 90, at least 90 different departments that they bill for and they bill for over, over 700,000 bills annually. That is where our revenue comes in from patient reimbursement. Now, we submit our, we submit our budget to the county every year, just like any county department does. Our funding ratio runs right around 60, 40 on average. It may be a little higher from the county this year, it may be a little lower depending on what our capital needs are. I will say for the last four years, with this, last year being 100%, but before that being partially, we've been able to fund a vast majority of our capital projects through savings in other areas that we have not spent over the course of that year. This past year, we had enough money in our fund balance that we funded the entirety of our capital needs, capital needs being ambulances predominantly. That is the biggest thing, we need computers and so forth.
Do you, now, you talked about all your call, your total calls, do you bill for each call?
Each call.
Or not?
I'm sorry?
I mean, you, every, every call, whether you transport or not?
Yes, no, okay, every transport, we do bill. So this is a little funny that nobody has had success in changing it. EMS was started back in 1967 with a publication of what was called the White, with a white paper. That was, I think it was called the Death and Death Memorandum of United States Citizens. Back then, it said the vast majority of all people who die less than their age of expected death died at the hands of a motor vehicle accident. Their choice then, the federal government was to put EMS under the Department of Transportation. To this day, it still lies, we ultimately lie under the Department of Transportation for regulation and for oversight. With that being said, unless we transport a patient from point A to point B, we're not giving them transportation, we can't bill for them. Now, the onset of the Community Paramedicine Program and other programs has given us indication where we need to bill for, bill these patients for services rendered. But at this time nationally, we can't, we don't have recourse to collect from them. We can bill them all they want to, but that doesn't mean we're going to get anything out of them. Union County has a rate that if we do give a patient care on site, regardless of whether we transport it or not, we do bill them. Now, if they don't bill, if they don't pay for the services we render, say if we give a medication that wakes them up, a diabetic, for instance, we can bill them. But if they decide not to pay, there's very little we can do for, do about it, just simply because the way the laws are in. It sounds a little, a little screwy that we are in the same regulation as the, that buses, the bus systems are. But unless we transport from point A to point B, we have no recourse in billing them. Any questions about this? EMSMC has been a great partner for us. They have, they also provide oversight in regulation, a lot of the things dealing with the COVID, the CARES Act and so forth, they have, give us consulting on how to approach that. The former chief of North Carolina EMS, Regina Crawford, is on staff with him now as a consultant to help us navigate through the legalities of all the things that are continuously changing through North Carolina, as well as through the federal side.
Brian, if I might, back to the last slide. Unpaid bills, I know we have the debt set off program, et cetera, but as part, after something's billed, goes through a collection cycle?
It does, yes.
Who's that, is the, who's handling the collection of those unpaid bills? Is that turned over to an outside agency? Is this EMSMC, you know, who, who, who's collecting that?
So EMSMC, that is one of the things they provide for us. So it keeps us out of the bad light, it keeps Union County out of the bad light of being the collection agency. They take the responsibility for collections of debts, negotiating with insurance companies, contract negotiation and so forth. If there are those who unfortunately decide not to pay their bill for whatever reason, it is turned over to a collection agency. And again, they manage that themselves internally, we don't have management there. Any other questions? This is, at the behalf of the county, I did put together a comparison of rates of our county as well as other counties in the well, as in the area, as well as Pink Johnston County, which is very similar in population across the state. It's not similar as far as demographics go, but as far as size, it is somewhat similar to what we, what we operate off of. And you can see there are some areas on here that we are lower and there's other areas that we are higher. So it just depends upon how the services bill for what they do as to what they reimburse. Our rates that we set meet Medicare, Medicaid standards, they meet, as well as they meet insurance standards also for what we can actually receive. At the end of the day, you can bill them anything you want, but that doesn't mean you're going to get payment for it. I can bill them $1,000 per call, but that doesn't mean I'm going to get $1,000. I may get 500 and call it a day. And basically, every county is like that. It's sort of hard to include Mecklenburg County in this here, just simply because they have such a high rate compared to us. Down at the bottom, you'll see our mileage rate is $12.44 per mile. Other counties are 12, 15. Mecklenburg County's is actually $27 per mile. So it's, one county is not easily compared to another county without looking into all the things that go into it. And this is something we don't have to do to determine which category it falls. We submit our patient care reports to EMSMC, they go through it and pick out certain things, certain interventions, IVs, oxygen and so forth, and that determines what rate this falls into according to CMS standards. All of these are based again on CMS standards, sinister Medicare, Medicaid services. So this is not something that someone just randomly pulled out of the air, it is something that is put together based on that. Miles per response, that's, this is something that we've talked about over the years. Back in FY15, we were looking at 26 miles per response. And this basically says of all the miles that we drove through that year, divide that into the number of calls that we ran and that will give you just an average of the number of miles that we drove. That is just a way we look at how we're doing, how we're performing. That was continually climbing until 2017, climbed a little bit more in 2018, then we put the demand monitor in place and we've seen that level off and actually start dropping over the past year. So even though we have had situations where we have less trucks on the road, they're driving farther, but we're still seeing less miles over that. So that's been something we've had a success, definitely have a success on. Education, Union EMS again surpasses all requirements set forth by the North Carolina Department of OEMS, as well as the National Registry of EMTs and Paramedics. They set a stand, a list of standards that we meet, we far surpass that. We are recognized by the state office as an approved training institution. So in North Carolina, in order to teach, be it on a continual education basis or a new student basis, you have to be approved to get credit for it. Each year, Union EMS teammates together complete in excess of 10,000 hours of training. So that's, sounds like a lot and it is a lot, it's a tremendous amount, but that meets our requirements and just slightly goes over the requirements set forth. One of the things I want to add is that when everything started shutting down throughout the state for COVID and throughout the nation, one of the things we did is we had the infrastructure in place to start converting everything to online education. We started converting things over immediately and we maintain our education. We did not stop with our education. Every single month, we have anywhere from four to eight hours of education, continuing education, as per the state regulations. We have not met that. Other counties, larger counties and much better funded counties than Union EMS stopped theirs and we're grappling, grappling with how they would continue their education in person. We didn't do it in person. There's a few things we still have to do in person, we have to check off our teammates, but the vast majority of it is done online now. So that's one of the things we're very fortunate with.
Brian?
Yes, sir.
Is your training in-house or is that in conjunction with South Piedmont? I know they have an EMS program.
It's both. So our education is a continuing education program, whereas South Piedmont's is an initial learning program. They turn out EMTs and paramedics initially, we hire them or hire them through the program and then we keep their education going. So in the state of North Carolina, as well as any other EMS agency across the nation, if you're going to maintain your credentials as an EMT, paramedic or any other certification, you've got to continually test, you've got to continually take this education. It's not a once and done deal, unfortunately. So, and there are a few classes that we have partnered with them that they have provided education for us, the ones that are not part of the prescribed program, rescue scene management, one, those things, we do partner with the college when we possibly can, yes.
Question?
Yes, sir.
I know the public schools have a fire academy, I think like at Piedmont. Have you guys talked to the public school system about maybe trying to, or have y'all have something in place already?
We've had something very similar, we do it in-house, we have our Explorer program. Our Explorer program maintains about 20 to 30 people annually, students, they are students within the high schools from the eighth grade up until being a senior at that point in time. Once they turn 18, they rotate off of that program, they have an option of taking an EMT course or of going to the EMT course on their own. We have had some good success rates set over the years. We have had a number of those that during their Explorer program took the EMT program and did come back to work with us. So not in the same manner, but yes, we do have a program very similar to that.
Can you speak to what kind of turnover you have among your paramedics?
Last year, I will say that we were right around 4% to 5%. This year, I believe it is a little bit higher than that. I don't, honestly, I, I can give that for you, but I do not have that information in front of me. We did get a report that indicated what our turnover was. But I know that ours meets what other agencies. what other agencies. Now, I always want to be better than other agencies, but at the end of the day, I've got to have something to benchmark it against. So I do know that we were better in some areas against other departments, and there's some departments we were much, much less in. Cabarrus County, for instance, has a much lower attrition rate, but they have a different deployment model. Macklinburg County has right about the same, but at the same time, they fund their EMTs and paramedics much higher level than we do, so they have that retention there to keep them for what they do. So it's not exactly an apples-to-apples comparison, there's a lot of things that go into it. Hanson, for instance, has a lower salary rate, they have a much, much, much higher turnover rate, much higher attrition rate. Gaston has a higher attrition rate than we do. So what you find is usually, you have a group of teammates that have been there for 15, 20, 25 years, they say, they don't go anywhere. Then you have that medium group who are getting their feet wet, so to speak, as far as what their career options are. Then you have the younger set that comes in, stays a year or so, then they go on to something else. I've actually had some of the new teammates in the past make the comment that, yeah, I thought I'd see how this works out, and if not, then I'll just go find something else. So, and that is unfortunately, the mindset of a lot of people that we see in the workplace at this time, in this profession. Police departments, you get on with a police department that's considered a career. Fire service, they see people coming the door, it's a career. EMS, they think of it as being a career, but once they get in and they realize what it is and how hard it is, they would still like to make it a career, but they realize sometimes that the things they deal with, the health issues and other things, don't make it quite as appealing as it once was. It's unfortunate, but it's true.
Brian, how many current vacancies are you currently carrying?
I believe we are carrying, and this number changes. We just hired seven this past week, two weeks before that, we hired, I believe it was five additional, so that's 12. And I believe we are still carrying a combination EMT and paramedic are right around 14, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I can get that.
14 in addition to the 12 already hired?
Right, that's still what remains.
So, based on the numbers you showed us on the slide earlier, there's about 112 paramedic EMTs that are on shift, so 4% to 5% would be about six a year.
Mm-hmm.
That's pretty significant turnover, and when you're talking about hiring 12 in the last two weeks and still got 14 openings.
And I will tell you, it's probably a little higher than that this year, I'm not going to make any bones about it. But again, I will say, one of the things I have the privilege of doing is talking to other EMS administrators around the state. They're no different than we are, they're no different situation than we are. Doesn't make it right, but at the same time, they are suffering the same consequences that we are. It's just, it's heartbreaking, it really is. I wish I had that magic wand that we could wave the wand and fix the issues, but it's not that simple.
Can, next time you're with us, can you share your plan to fix that?
Absolutely. That was one of the things that we've submitted, I'd be more than happy to, love to. This is our 2020 Hearts in Hand Ceremony. This year, we had one of the best and one of the biggest ceremonies that we had. This program, or this recognition program, gives the opportunity for the lifesavers, the EMTs, the paramedics, the first responders, as well as law enforcement, to come back and meet those that they've had the opportunity to save. This past year, we had between 300 and 350 people in attendance. Of that, we had 34 cardiac arrest survivors, with one surviving twice, so that was good. I thought it was appropriate that we had 35 saves for 35 years. Back 35 years ago, it was very uncommon to have one life saved a year. It just wasn't something that you seen that often. When you did have someone who made it through a cardiac arrest, you heard about it forever. And we remember the day when Joe saved this person, or whatever the case was. Now it's becoming, I'm not going to say commonplace, but it is actually moving up. Union County, statistically speaking, has one of the higher survival rates, according to the American Heart Association, of any EMS agency around the nation. It's been joked before, some of our regional committees, that if you're going to have a cardiac arrest, have it in Union County. So we're very fortunate in that. But at the same time, that doesn't mean we want to stop where we at, we want to keep improving upon this. But we had seven survivor families, and their families attend this past year and were recognized. We had 60 teammates that were recognized for being a part of a cardiac arrest survivorship. Two teammates, or two employees from Lancaster EMS, that we had a call that was right on the state line, it got a deal response, it got a Union EMS response, and a Lancaster response, because they didn't know exactly where the address fell, so they were recognized as well. Four different law enforcement agencies, 14 fire departments from throughout the county, 28 telecommunicators that were part of our survivorship. Again, with approximately 300 to 350 recognized. It was a very, very good, it was a good night, it really was. Lots of tears were shed that night, and a lot of people said thank you for what they had to be thankful for. So that was, that's very good, that's something everybody looks forward to, year after year after year. Commissioner Habs, I think I've seen you there before several times in the past, and it's an open invitation that every time I have that, we'll have it this year, but in the future, it is an open invitation for everyone of you to attend, I'd love to see you there.
I agree, that was a very impressive ceremony, and recognized all first responders, not just the EMS.
Correct.
It's a team.
It is, it most definitely is. The American Heart Association likens it to a chain of survival, with hospital being a link, first responders being a link, early defibrillation and so forth. You've heard the saying that the strongest chain is only as strong as its weakest link, and that is a prime example. So we've got a good group here in Union County that works together very well to make this happen. Just another, as far as recognitions and wins goes, another one of the things I want to point out is our patient satisfaction survey results, and this was the most recent I had, which was June 1st of this past year, until November 30th of this past year, we had 107 respond voluntarily to the survey, patient satisfaction. Of that, 96% were either excellent or exceeds expectations. So that was something that we're very proud of, and that is something we see consistently, that's not something that's a one-off. Usually, the only time you hear something out of a patient satisfaction result is when something goes wrong. We're fortunate enough that we've seen some very high standings of that, and it just, it does your heart well to see that people thank you for what you've done, it really is. We don't do this for things, we don't ask for things, but it makes the team feel much better when they do get a thing, and we make sure we recognize them for that. Challenges, has anybody heard of anything called COVID-19? That's one of our biggest challenges we're facing currently and for the foreseeable future. It has impacted us dramatically, in ways that we could have never imagined, it has affected us in staffing, it's affected us in supply procurement, current operations, in the way of our deployment times due to the staffing, our turn times at the hospital, as well as overall teammate morale. It's, it has affected us in every single way of our operation. Never in a million years would I have imagined what we're going through this year. So, in the past, when you get a call, a response for service, you would go in, you'd take care of the patient, you'd take him to the hospital, and you'd go back in service after you cleaned the truck. Now you've got additional PPE you've got to wear, you've got additional masks you've got to wear, in some situations, they have to fully suit up, suit up in suits, complete isolation. Once they get to the hospital, you have to take complete isolation precautions there, you have to take precautions as far as how you turn the patient over, then you've got to go through a special process of cleaning the truck. So that alone has impacted everything we've seen. Initially, we thought this was going to be something, a few months at the most, it'd be a once and done deal, then we'd get back to normal. We're over a year into it now, and we're still seeing this with no sign, we're starting to see signs of slowing down with the vaccine, but still, we know realistically, it's going to be months away. You've heard of seeing a light at the end of the tunnel, currently, we feel that light at the end of the tunnel is somewhat of a freight train coming at us. And when paramedics and EMTs have to do this every single day, over and over and over again, it hurts, it really does. One of the things the state of North Carolina recommended, Office of EMS recommended early on, was the cancellation of first responders going into these patients. They wanted to keep everybody out that they possibly could. We implemented the change as the state of North Carolina recommended. So now, not only are you having to do more, and this has been going on ever since last, I believe, February or March, not only are you doing everything that you've always done to the patient, you've increased that level as far as the PPE and so forth in that area, but you're now doing it by yourself. You don't have the first responders as that assist them, and that has happened approximately 60% of every single call. That went on until November, when we looked at the protocol, we looked at how we were responding, our numbers, how CCOM was doing in the screening process, and we opted to roll it back, ease it off a little bit. But still, to this day, due to the questioning that happens, we are still seeing a very large number of first responders that are being asked to stage, not going to the scene until a paramedic arrives and makes an assessment. So if that's happening, there's still situations where they're not seeing the patient, and it is detrimental to the crews. It is a tremendous increase in their work volume that they have to do. Any questions? Other challenges, one of the biggest challenges on my radar is maintaining sustainable operations due to what's going on today. Not only is COVID affecting us, we also have seen world events that have affected us. We haven't seen it to the same level, obviously, but there's always that possibility, the riots and so forth that have been seen in Charlotte and around other areas will bleed over into this area. Through the graces of the county, we were able to purchase all of our teammates with bulletproof vests about a year and a half ago. I never dreamed I would see an EMS personnel wearing a bulletproof vest. There's been a number of times that we've been thankful that we've had it. It's one of those things where it's a sign of the times. But in addition to that, not only dealing with that, you're also dealing with the COVID and everything that goes along with that. We hear and we think that it's coming, drawing to a close sometime with the next few months, we hope, we're keeping our fingers crossed, but we don't know what the next thing is. What is the next thing that is going to pop up? Another continued sustainable staffing levels, we're looking at this as a long-term, this is changing the way we recruit, changing the way we internally educate and promote our teammates as well. Someone had asked earlier a question about who does the recruiting for paramedics? Commissioner Rush, was that you? How we recruit and hire, it is done internally, it is done with the assistance of Atrium Health. They put out the advertisements nationwide, it is put everywhere possibly conceivable, we bring them in and we hire what we possibly can. This past go-around of the seven that we hired, all seven of them were basic EMTs. Basic EMTs are something that you can find, that you can turn an EMT out within three to four months, whereas a paramedic, you're looking at really a basic timeframe of about 18 months to turn out. And those that enter the program, if they don't have a job already waiting on them, committed to them, then they will definitely have a job before they get out of the program. So it's not something that we can just go to the local community college and say, how many do you have in this job fair? It's just, they're just not out there. And then again, something that we have discussed in the past with the county management team is, long-term, is facilities, just trying to encompass what we currently need. Currently, the station, the base that we respond out of was designed as just that, a response station for three to four trucks. Now, the way the program is designed with upward of 20 trucks, they all come from that facility. We have met a lot of challenges with storage areas for medical supplies, and in addition to that, it's just dangerous. When you have 20 trucks coming and going in a parking lot not much bigger than this room, you just, you always have that constant fear of someone getting hit or struck in the parking lot, so. But again, that's long-term looking, what we're looking at. Any questions?
You had a slide earlier that showed a couple acronyms, ALS, BLS, could you describe for me what that is?
Yeah, absolutely. So, in North Carolina, there are three main levels, starting one we have talked about, but it wasn't in there, first responder. Again, the first responder, you can be a first responder inside of just a few months. Union County, the vast predominance of our first responders are at the EMT level, that is what's considered the basic level. Basic, again, is about three months approximately, can take four months, it just depends on how many nights you go to class and how your class is set up. It can be done as quickly as about five weeks if you go every day, turn an EMT out pretty quickly. ALS being your advanced level, your advanced life support, that's the paramedics, that's what takes about 18 months. Now, again, just like anything else, one of the things we were looking at proposing was a boot camp style academy, where someone comes in Monday through Friday, all they do is learn. They learn from a fire hose every single day. That can be done as quickly as about seven to eight months. But then again, that is all they do, is they learn from the time they get there until the time they leave. It realistically cannot be done any shorter than that. But yes, that's the three levels, first responder, basic EMT, BLS, and then your advanced life support. There is one additional level in North Carolina, is the EMT advanced, and all you're doing there is taking an EMT and giving them a few more skills. I think they can actually start an IV and possibly an airway, but beyond that, everything falls back to the paramedic to them.
Thank you.
Does that go back to EMT 1 and 2 that they used to have?
You're dating yourself, because I can't answer that. I've been in this for about 36 years, 35 years, and I don't remember those, but I would assume so, yes. When I got this, got into this work back in the mid-'80s, there was a, there was a lot more. You had your medical responder, your EMT, your EMT, excuse me, your EMT defibrillator, your advanced EMT, and then your paramedic. So there was five levels back then, in addition to the medical responder as well. Now they try to simplify it, they've gone to just those three main levels with an addition of first responder.
Brian?
Yes, sir.
Going back to the map that you showed, that showed the core, and then the outer ring that was in green, do you track the number of requests that Union EMS makes for mutual aid from surrounding agencies in other counties?
We don't, but I know that CCOM does. We've seen that report, we didn't request it from them, but we've seen that report floating around. And one thing you have to understand is for every one request that we receive for a standby, there's usually five to six mate, for instance. If a county says, we need mutual aid assistance, they call, just say, for instance, if it is Macklinburg County that needs assistance, they call Union, they call Gaston, they would call Arndale, they would call all of the surrounding counties. So even though we only received one request for a standby, there's about five to six other requests that we don't see anything about. We had in the past, I believe it was five months, 128 requests from other counties to stand by.
Do you know how many requests that we make, that we're not able to get to, that are situations like were described earlier, where we don't have an ambulance that is in close proximity in one of the outer regions of the county, where we are requesting, for instance, an Hanson County, or a Stanley County, or a Cabarrus County to come in?
Right.
And make that run?
It's going to be more than that, again, that goes back to, whereas, even though we are requested to cover that one area, there's six around us that receive that request. Now, it's not very often that they actually run a call, and the average time on standby is usually on average about 10 minutes before we free them up. So it's not, and again, they hardly ever make it to the county. Basically, when we call them and say, or when CCOM makes that request to them and says, we need mutual aid assistance, do you have a truck in the area? Yes, they put them at their station close to the county line, they don't come in unless they're needed, and there is an actual response. That does happen occasionally, but it is very rare.
Okay. Another follow-up question, when you listed the slide, what had all the costs of service, how is that developed? Has that developed internally within Union EMS? Is that at a higher level within Atrium? Is, how is that?
That is made through Union EMS, we make recommendations based upon what information we're provided from EMSMC. Again, it goes back to what I said earlier, you can charge anything, but if you can't expect to collect it, it just skews the numbers. Once that number is landed upon, it comes before the commission for approval. To my knowledge, we've not had any rate changes for the last, we've not had any since I've been here. I have not come to this board asking for any rate increases. So that is something we develop based upon numbers from Centers for Medicare/Medicaid Services, in conjunction and recommended by EMSMC. We develop that schedule and then come to the board for approval.
Okay. When this billing agency is trying to collect, or they are charging, or let's say it's, the user has insurance, are we, are we, Union EMS, discounting that by a certain percent of Medicare, or are you using Atrium's managed care contract?
We don't use anything with Atrium, all of ours is done specifically with the insurance company. We do have two contracts, one is the, with Blue Cross/Blue Shield, St. Louis, Carolina, and the other is Blue Cross in general. We have a negotiated rate for that, for a collection, and we looked at our negotiated rate, which is lower, as opposed to just billing them without a contract, and we showed where our collection rates would be higher by collection rates would be higher by going with the contractual service. That recently, that went into service as recent as, actually, one of them took place this week, started. So that's something we've just now been able to get accomplished. Been working on it for years, we've just never had any luck with it.
Okay.
Now, Medicare and Medicaid have rates that they charge. You can charge all day long, but if you're, if we accept assignment, you can't get anywhere out of it. And we're in a fortunate situation in this county where we don't have anywhere near the number of Medicaid patients that are seen in other counties. Unfortunately, statistically speaking, usually, your Medicaid demographic does utilize pre-hospital service more than an insurance does. So with the onset of healthcare, with the onset of healthcare reform a few years ago, that has provided insurance for everybody, that has somewhat leveled out, though.
Okay. One last question. Reciprocity for paramedic EMT coming in from out of state, what does that look like in North Carolina? I know North Carolina, the state of North Carolina can be rather difficult, well, they have very, very strict guidelines when it comes to accepting reciprocity of educational levels and our certifications from out of state. And we run into that in some of our other areas in the county. Are you running into that as well?
Not now, not anywhere what it used to be. We really had a change in leadership in the Office of EMS about five years ago. With that change came a lot of reform. We don't have anywhere near the problems that we did in the past. So basically, if you can show your credentials, you have a national-level paramedic. You petition the Office of EMS for a credential in North Carolina, they'll give you a provisional, so you can go ahead and start then until all the paperwork is completed, the background checks and everything else. It's not near as hard as it used to be.
Thank you.
North Carolina is one of the few states that does not accept national registry. I can't tell you why, but they just always chose to go with their own set of requirements.
And that's not uncommon, again, across other certifications and licensures in North Carolina.
Right.
I don't know why that is, but it does make recruiting difficult in a number of the areas that we have to have licensure in, whether it might be environmental health specialists or building code enforcement certifications or whatever, we run into that quite often.
County manager certifications.
Who determines the pay scale and who manages the employees?
So the pay scale is designed and is recommended through Atrium. They do pay studies of the areas of all other EMS agencies within the area, and they rate us based upon what others are making in that area. What we've been in discussions with is demonstrating to them, it's hard to make that comparison because of the jobs that we do. Our teammates have a different job description than, say, one in Stanley, or one in Mecklen... well, not Mecklenburg, I shouldn't say Mecklenburg, one in Stanley, or Cabarrus, or Gaston. They have a different deployment model, they have a different set of responsibilities. So someone who comes back to their station, gets out of their truck, parks their truck, has time to wash their truck and so forth, that's their job for that day, whereas someone who sits in their truck is just completely different. So we've been working with them, working closely with them, trying to reevaluate that and redo that kind of level.
So what's the guarantee, like, when you come to the county manager with your proposed needs from the county, and what's the guarantee that it will go to salaries rather than something else?
I'm...
Do you ask for an aligned item for salaries?
Yes, yes. Our budget is, it's a very detailed budget as far as what goes to salaries, what goes to capital, what goes to operations, medical supplies, printer and copy. It's several hundred lines of what everything goes to.
So it's not something that county staff has been saying, keep their pay low?
No, no.
Yes, it's a decision from Atrium.
Well, it's one of those things where it is based upon the information at hand, so it's now, it's time, I think. And again, if you just look at pay, our pay is comparable, if you just look at numbers. But it takes all of the other things that goes into it, is working conditions, deployment model, and those type things, requirements. That's where, in order to keep those involved, it's going to take a little bit more.
I was thinking earlier on, you said there was a, maybe we were underpaying a little bit.
I'm always going to tell you that for what they do and what they have to deal with, they're underpaid. Now, it's, that's up for debate across the nation, but I defend my guys for what they do, that they work hard at it, they really do. But I think for the deployment model that they have and the working conditions they deal with, I think it could be a little better. But we're, again, we're working with the groups involved in that, so I think we're making progress. Actually, I know we're making progress on that.
You mentioned earlier, using fund balance for some capital purchase. You have a separate for operations and a separate fund balance for capital?
No, the fund balance is just one general fund. Anything that's left over out of our budget at the end of the year goes over towards that minus any encumbrances that we have. So if there is, say, if we were able to manage it so that we save $250,000, be it through salaries, lap salaries, or operating supplies not used, or whatever the case is, it goes into the fund balance. Usually, the next year, we look at that, see what's in there, and pull as much as we can from that to fund the capital purchases.
If I could follow up on that, there are actually two fund balances. One is required by the county for EMS to fund that, and that's held and managed by the county. And the, there's a second fund balance that's held and managed, I say managed by Atrium, but used by Atrium to fund capital needs. I know over the last two years, we had, two years ago, we had, I think, three ambulances that broke frame and had to be replaced, and the money to pay for those ambulances came from that Atrium fund balance. That money, they have to come to the county to get the permission to spend that money, but that is fund balance that's maintained by Atrium over and above the fund balance that the county maintains.
Okay. Contractions, we're required to maintain a fund balance of $500,000. We don't touch that, we don't invade that and accept extreme emergencies. We've never been to a situation where we've had to invade that fund since I've been here. So anything that we pull from the fund balance comes above and beyond that level.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
Any other questions?
Gentlemen, I appreciate the time. I appreciate the time that y'all have given me this afternoon. I appreciate the questions. I look forward to coming back, and I do invite you at any given time, if you'd like to see what we've got, see our operation, meet our team, you have an open-door invitation at any time to stop by to see what we do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you in about three months. Next, we have managers' comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have three items. I'll try to keep this brief. First is a thank you to the organizers, volunteers, and supporters of Crime Stoppers. This past Friday, they had their annual fundraiser barbecue. It's the only fundraiser they have for the entire year. I understand they sold out of barbecue early.
About 12:30.
And there was a significant increase in the amount of sponsor support this year over previous years. Thank you, thank you to everyone in the community that supported that effort. Second, I want to echo Deputy County Manager Michelle Lancaster's thanks to staff regarding the COVID vaccine program. I have received, I cannot tell you at this point how many emails or phone calls of thanks and appreciation. There really have been two themes to all of those communications. One is the thanks and appreciation for the well-run, welcoming atmosphere that staff is providing at the vaccine clinic. And the second is that almost to a person, they have stated how proud they are to be a resident of Union County. That, you don't hear that, those kinds of comments very often, especially when it comes to governmental-type programs, but we are hearing that on an everyday basis with this program. Special thanks to our folks in information technology, who helped design and get online, our online registration program. I understand we were probably one of the first organizations across the state to get something like that automated and get it up and running and get the kinks worked out so that it was useful. To our public health staff, thank you to our human services staff, who is supporting public health, answering the telephones, getting all those registrations done, helping guide folks, you know, in from the parking lot down into the auditorium and getting them back to their vehicles, we say thank you. And lastly, thank you to Union EMS for their monitoring activities. Once the vaccine's given, individuals have to be monitored for so many minutes afterwards. And my sense was, when I visited the clinic, that it gave the folks certain peace of mind, knowing that there was somebody right there that was trained to respond in case there was an adverse reaction and see to their medical care. So thank you to all of those individuals. It's a team effort, and your teamwork is appreciated, and it shows, and it's something we can all be proud of. Lastly, prayers and thoughts go out to the family of Patrick Saunders. Patrick was a native Union County son, graduated from Weddington High School, was taken from us in a tragic car accident recently, Saturday. His friends and colleagues, coworkers bid farewell to him. He had, Patrick was 32, but he had spent 15 years volunteering and working with the Wesley Chapel Fire Department. He had also spent several years working with Charlotte Fire and was a member of Station Two. And lastly, he was a member of the United States Army, served as a medic, and recently returned, very recently returned from an extended deployment overseas. So we bid farewell to Patrick. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
No comments tonight.
Commissioner Williams?
No comments.
Commissioner Rushing?
No comments.
Commissioner Simpson?
I would be remiss if I did not share the comments that I too have heard, Manager Watson, from many people in the community who expressed their pleasure with the quality of service that they received with the COVID vaccination, numerous phone calls and emails. I wanted to pass the word along as well. One other thing I would like to note, the passing of Mr. Larry Harrington. He was one of the first Republican commissioners elected here in Union County, a staunch conservative, and I just want to recognize his service to the citizens of Union County.
Okay. And I as well have received numerous calls complimenting the services they've received at our Department of Health, and thank you for what you're doing. And with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.